Uh. Twenty-three to quarter and we will start the roll call. Trusty Booker, your trusty Woods, your trusty Owens, your trusty Johnson.
President.
Trusty Thompson, President, President Montgomery, President, and we have one excuse. Athens and that's truck degrees. Um, I would invite you to join me for the presidency. I have to be against. Uh, you know, I'm saying it's going to. It should be called it. Both hands. One nation. In this ball, we'll look at. For all. So, um, do we have any person to be heard? Yeah, sir, to like to come up and state your name. Right, um, and add your address for the record and then, um. What you might. Somebody can speak into this. Yeah, if you do, um, oh, the president go, okay.
Um, I'm Jeff Barker, Agent Owen, Lawrence Seaver Road. The only thing I want to write up is for the topic, which is the road reconstruction and Brad, um, regarding Sherman and Tonya. Um, that particular area, first of all, Sherman and Bradley has been quite a problem achieving. Might even talk about it and asking, I'm sure about, you know, the semis have horrible time trying to turn there a lot of. Issues with it, so having to resign from the idea. The only thing that I really question, um, number one is that if you're going to try to. You know, close down Tonya to my northbound. And and shifting all the traffic that is Sherman or my northbound. There's lots of semis that, um, would still have to make that turn. So the question is, you know, yeah, that that's. Going to, that will be accommodating. The other thing that I'm truly concerned about too is that I would. Ask in some of these studies how much, um. Traffic from semis is on to Tonya versus Sherman because, you know, if you're going to shift. Once, yeah, I mean, if it's on to Tonya, you're shifting it all over. Uh, Sherman, I just meant to get the best issue. The other thing, major thing that I really want to bring up is Hanson's storage. Um, paying our money because we've been behind them. First of all, they have two entrances to that facility, one of those on Bradley, what the other one on Tonya, this project looks like. Close to one on Tonya. So that means that all semi truck truck is going now. Um, entering on Bradley. The thing is that the. The area from Tonya right now to Green Bay on Bradley is a no truck. No truck truck, Rob, and it's abused and ignored, and I'm afraid that will get worse. Um, once the entrance from Bradley is closed or to or Hanson, it's heavily, hence it's heavily used. Lots of problems we've had over the years. One of the things that I really love to do is force Hanson. When you definitely only you exit from that facility is that it is a. Westbound exit only, they cannot. When they leave the facility, it would be really nice if that thing designed, and I need all traffic. So that means if even pedestrians, I mean, part was still. Paying around about ten thousand. But it would might cause some of that, but I just think that you should definitely look into see whether where the traffic. From traffic coming from, they're using titanium. Just, you know, just be prepared for what that's going to cost. Coming down around about twenty to more than, okay?
Thank you. And I know that I was assuming there's going to be future meetings. But this, and I'm pretty aware of the county project.
That's what I just understood. I, I actually thought us, but, um, anyway.
Thank you. Um, any, no one else. So we will move to our next item, which is. Um, I got an official stat report. Uh, and, um, your packets. Uh, the only thing I, I included a report, one thing that I didn't. And, and, uh. I did attend a meeting with Tyler and Matt, Matthew and Nate with City and the guy. I didn't put it in my report, not on the video recording, but anyway. Um, that was my last week. Any, oh, Rusty Johnson.
Yeah, this is from Tyler. I know it's on here in your report. You talk about needing hotels, but are there issues? Well, safety issues concerning so good.
Yeah, there, I didn't want to publicly say, but there's one hotel that had been having some issues. Um, and so, uh, Chief Nimmer and I went out and and the police department kind of did an audit of their property. As far as identifying some areas improvement for security cameras and fighting. Um, and made some recommendations to that hotel, um, and that we've done some added, um, enforcement. Which over one of the weekends, they actually caught. Uh, someone in the act of trying to steal some vehicles and that, so we were able to, um, make some arrests on that, but. Um, it was just some general conversations to try to really support them, and I think it was really well invited. I, um. It's the gossip, so. Uh, but that did step from recent, some of the hotels, especially if they're near, uh, Rockview. Uh, road, they've only had like maybe one or two incidents over the last three, four years, so it's been very rare. It's some of the ones that are a little further back, they've been seeing multiple incidences. In the last couple of months, so that is where we've been trying to be proactive to address that. No matter. Yeah. Any other?
If not, um. Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda. Is the consent agenda, which is fifth of our minutes on July seventeen. Uh, considering, consider approval of the fifth amendment to Greenland, that's the development agreement. And consider approval of closing those facilities on September twenty-first and eleven. For the rest of the day for all employee training. Um. Any questions to the, I considered on consent agenda? Uh, for the owners and then trusty, uh.
I just had a question about the, um. Prove of the fifth amendment for the agreement, I saw it was kind of. Standing on that one because of the, 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 you know, on that minister's. Cause I saw a little bit confused.
Yeah, I, I, the, the, the one change was when we were going to the board of review, there was some. Language and have this agreement that was linking, um. Um. Property taxes to the minimum guarantee. And that, that, that's actually, I mean. And so I think it was causing some perceptions that no matter what the valuation would be. That the tax would be linked to that minimum guarantee, no matter what, what that number was, and that's not true. So that was just some clarifying language. That we wanted to work with F Street to let them know, and this was important this time around because with their current assessment. It was above the minimum guarantee, um, so that's going to have an impact on. You know, property taxes that they would pay moving forward. So we would just clarify that, which. Basically, that's kind of, I'm just. For the. It is, right, this through the PGO that is set up, the tax that they think would be back the tax for them is. They're going to get to their, you know, incentives sooner. Um, because they're not paying more than the minimum guarantee. Okay, yeah.
You got rid of the amount too, didn't you? There was one home we had to reach.
Yes, correct. That's another question. Yeah, correct. Thank you, Ken.
Other questions? Uh, Rusty.
Yes, one question on the, you know, I don't see the consent agenda. Is this something you'd envision would be a year?
I do. I'd like to do it once a year where we've all worked together and we get. You know, I kind of gave some examples of things that we would talk about. Uh, when I first got here and talked to employees, a lot of employees mentioned it would be nice to be able to get everyone together. You know, a few times a year to talk about building related business and having. Just talk about basically helping each other, so or do that, the really only way we make that work is to close the facilities. So trying to use that time as efficiently as possible. So the goal would be to do it once a year in the fall. Uh, kind of is the best time that works for all departments.
Other questions? If not, do you need a motion to approve consent agenda?
And will we approve the consent agenda first?
Is there a second? I think it's been moved by truck, the would affect by truck the owners to approve consent agenda. Oh, that's okay, I forgot my lead in, um. Okay. All those in favor? All right. Uh, any opposed? I have that most curious. Thank you. Thank you for the correction. Um, new business.
Presenting Milwaukee. Sorry. Yes, um, I was writing notes, uh, for the consideration minutes, by me just do a friendly amendment. Uh, in the motion, when we came on a full session. Uh, about the F Street, um, the minutes did not reflect an actual vote. Um, so we just need to add in there a, uh, the actual vote, which is unanimous, but we need to break in seven minutes. So if I could just make that friendly amendment to include that in the adopted minutes.
Okay. Do we need to go back?
I think as long as there's no objections, but.
Is there an objection? Woods or none of it? All right, all right, thank you. Um, next item on the new business, presenting Milwaukee County North Sherman Boulevard. Uh, the THG reconstruction plans. Are you doing that, Matthew?
I will do that. Yep, um, so, um. We have recently met with engineers at Milwaukee County, um, and they have funded. Through the state, uh, whole road improvement program that must be spent by calendar year twenty-sixth. Um, and so this is for reconstruction of Sherman, which is was on their list for, um, pavement replacement. Um. Staff and Milwaukee County engineers have been looking at this intersection and looking at cleaning it up. Um, there's these, this leg of the titanium that comes off of Sherman into the roundabout. Um, and then Sherman itself in the northbound direction takes a bend around what's currently the, uh. Savannah area. And so the county is interested in reconstructing Sherman and just straightening it. Uh, they also come up with two other, um, design options that they're considering. Um, but they're also, it's this is the, the roadway in the village, so they're looking for village input and support. Uh, from one of the, these options. Um, everything's still extremely preliminary at this point, um, nothing has really been designed, what you're seeing is a picture on, on paper. Um, but, uh, once they kind of have some direction of which design option. Um, to choose, they would look at putting together what's called thirty percent plans, um. By November of this year, so then they just kind of start the design process this summer and then through the fall. Um, there'd be some memorandums, understanding that the village enough to enter into the county, um, and, um. So a few, a lot of, lot of steps to go before they, um, get the construction year of twenty twenty-sixth. Um. The village, we would have some utilities, relocations that we'd have to do also as part of this project. Um, so if whatever option we choose, there's going to be some real work that has to happen, so. Sanitary sewer, there'd be about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars sanitary sewer project, um, probably about five hundred thousand water main. Project that we have to view as a part of this as well. Um, but anyways, so I'll just kind of go through the three options that they had, uh. Presented to us, um, the pictures in the packet, um, so the first option is what I kind of described. Straining Sherman, and then we're illuminating that north leg of the roundabout. Um, I'll just comment on some subject that had made, yes, they would. Trucks would be fully able to make the movement going northbound, um, Sherman would be designed for, for trucks. They are keeping that, um, entrance. Hanson's entrance that's currently on the titanium right now linked to the new Sherman. Uh, so this entrance, sorry, I couldn't tell that, yeah, that, that would stay aligned. So that will not go away. That would be there. Okay, so I think that might be some of the concern that that will be. And then, uh, I appreciate the comment about that, uh, entrance on the rally roadside, so we definitely investigate that. And analyze that a little bit further. Um, but what this option A ends up doing also, um, is if Hanson ever goes away or gets redeveloped, now I have this. Twenty acre parcel that could be fully reimagined and redeveloped into something else. So it opens up some developable land for the village. So I think that is advantageous.
Is that not a matter?
Um, so yeah, the county, we have to go through a process of. Um, you know, there'd be a lot of vacated right away there and, um. We met with Andrea and Mark and they are full support, um. Giving that right away, I think that'd be like a quick claim deed back to the village. Um, and so they're fully supporting, um, doing that. So, so that, that, that's, that's one advantage option, um, B. Somewhat the same thing, but the Sherman leg still would take that jog around the savannah, see, they kind of reconstruct that as is. But still eliminating that north leg of the roundabout. And then, um, option C, this kind of gets a little funky, a little wild where you're making titanium the main leg. Um, keeping all the traffic on titanium, and Sherman kind of turns into this cold sack option, so. Kind of funky, funky design.
Yeah, now, on the diagram, we're looking at the diagonal ring lines, that exactly here that's only the. Um. The eighteen acres?
Yep, and I mean, that is one of the, so by Hanson's storage, and it does, and so Kathy Corzon will go along too. So it, it, you know, Kathy Corzon can, can stay there, but, but just think of it as more about if somebody would come in to purchase. And, and so, or against themselves, a developer, you know, maybe they do purchase Kathy Corzon, I, I don't know, but. You have now that parcel that can be developed.
I, if I could say, I, I think what we would want to do is work with Kathy Corzon to see. You know, what would go on there to complement Kathy Corzon? That's a, you know, a restaurant that I think for years to come. Could really do wonderful things to the community, and I think there's going to be a lot of developers that are excited. That they would be able to work with Kathy Corzon. I think another important thing is with this. Land, we need to find a good fit to, for the residential owners. As, you know, Jim's here tonight, and there's a lot of other people that live on the other side of the railroad tracks there that we need to make sure that. We find a development that fits that too. So I think there's going to be a lot of good options that stem from this. Uh, but we have some good community partners too that we can work with that will be a good fit. Um, the good thing is each of these options present. Options and flexibility for us to do something with that space. And I think it's also important to know that this is still in T four. So if, if we were able to generate some. You know, I don't know if it's going to be as much increment as we've seen in the original village, but even some, you know, positive increment might be helpful there. Um, so that's just a, another benefit, potential benefit of the project.
And it is all, you know, it can be market driven, so obviously these are all privately held, you know. You know, based on businesses, and so obviously there'd be, have to be an interested party on both sides, uh, but in the meantime, it's going to be. They're functioning as well. And what about Marcus? Marcus would obviously stay, they just stay right now too, but they'd be part of this package, um, if they are willing to sell. Um, you know, somebody could potentially come in here and, and buy Hanson or Marcus and. Redevelop that entire twenty acre parcel.
Yeah, um, Rusty, Ken, yeah.
Yeah, I have a question related to Hanson's storage. How accurate is that space? Is it mostly located in storage or is it?
They, I believe they have two tents or, or, um. Two businesses that are kind of utilizing that as storage. Um, you know, we've heard that, you know, they, they are potentially looking to sell, um, but. Um, I, I don't know how, how, how close they've come to such a sale. But, um, you know, that's something that has been discussed. Uh, but in the meantime, it's just primarily, you know, trucks and storage at this point.
One additional person could probably go indoor, I know they've fenced off. I don't know, this is an construction company here took over like a whole vacant restaurant or something. Is that actually working? The space.
Is that mine here?
Uh, still at home is that, maybe this is power between every area is at home.
Yeah, I, I believe that's probably Mr. Miles.
Yeah.
Or I, I give it what we're on. Yeah, so that's in the works. I, I know we spoke with, well, in email, we spoke with him. They, they just, I quote with the last month, and he said, he's really very hard to make some progress on it this year in summer, and we have seen some work being done. Uh, we haven't been given a definitive timeline yet, but I think we've seen more work on that, uh, this year than in years past, so. Really, yeah.
Other questions? So would, would this been two thousand and twenty-six? What, what's the, I guess, progression of the net that?
Yeah, so for tonight, it's just a presentation, and the actual action will occur. In, uh, IDF, when you adopt the CIP plan, uh, one of the changes we made since CIP was incorporated into utilities. Some of the work that would relocate, uh, water and sewers, uh, so that is now reflected. And so if you adopt the CIP, that's also your actions supported in twenty twenty-six. Do you have any verbal feedback to staff as far as options A we are seeing? Now would be the time that staff would take note of that. Uh, but the action will happen, I will, where you will approve CIP.
Yeah, I, I guess that as I look at D Johnson, if we're going to do it, I would. Like speed is free, I mean, that, um, to. And people are ready to speed. Like, why are you still going to have a job? That may be, and then, but, um. I guess the other thing in terms of. The construction. And this is probably growing. Um, would they be able to do something? Cause you know, we just spent what, uh. A year and a half with not being able to get to, right, ground your road, right? And so now the path. To at least whatever would be thirty seven street, thirty eighth street. To get back to Green Bay. Uh, or go down fifty first. To get back to ground your road. Um, or is there a way? To possibly do half of the road? So you still have traffic and then do the other here.
I believe that is how it will function, but very good point that we're on the stage of this thing and make sure. And be very cognizant of the detour routes and how they're going to build this, um. I would believe this would be a pretty easy one to build in halves, and that way you're able to keep.
Keep traffic.
At least one lane in each direction going northbound and then southbound, so. Um, we will definitely be working with the county on that, um, and stage this thing so that it's the. You know, use impact on the adjacent materials.
And, and that, I mean, cause at the beginning, you're like, if you're running your roads, you gotta go down Saks, you're like. Or, or fifty first, yeah, so. Um, other questions? Uh, Rusty Johnson.
Question related to this, I know that's more like a part of retention area. So what happens to there? Does later to develop, or there have to be somehow a vacuum? Have you done the plan to maintain that order with the area?
So the savanna is actually not really a, anything to do with floodwater, um, it was just, it, it's this depressed area and we, they naturalized it just because. Had more less grass in that area, so it's just this depressed area, it's, they're all storm sewer and everything. And there's no like water being held in savanna whatsoever. Okay, it's just, it's just really a, a natural. Just.
That's a lot of pressure though.
And, yeah. And it holds food. Okay, so this was in the presentation, no need for voter, any action?
Yeah, yeah, the general question, I think staff preference without an A, so I don't know if there's any difference in opinion, but. As I mentioned, that would be the time we would want to know otherwise for work with the county.
Any other? Okay, thank you. For. All right, next item on our agenda is, uh, consider approval of contact with it's been instituted for inspection service with a sand pipe. Taking the project in the amount of fifty nine thousand, uh, fifty dollars. If you imagine, oh, another.
Done it a couple of times.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we do that. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good, yeah, I'm sorry, you're good.
Yeah, we've got the next couple of items here, they're, they're all kind of tied together, we'll go through. I got one by one, the first one, you mentioned the extension area. Uh, kind of right by the services, we're going to be painting. The sand bike here, uh, starting in September. And, uh, we need to have, uh, inspection services to do the inspection on the coating that's going to be going on. Uh, the sand bike, uh, and that's something that we're going to have inside, um, it's really outside of what we do. And so we're not experts on coating and stuff like that, so, uh, Dixon Engineering. Will work with us in doing the painting specification of this project and then, uh, working with, uh, the utility. Since the, well, before, uh, two thousand, they did the last painting project with the stand by, we can do that, although they did the inspection on that. They've done subsequent inspections every five years that I know we can, they know our tower. Um, so we've, uh, the water commission has felt that pretty important to continue working with Dixon Engineering since they're very familiar on our tower and such, uh. Um. You know, important infrastructure that we have, that they wanted to continue that relationship, so this is the inspection. Service contract for them to do all of the inspection during the, uh, recoding of the inside and outside of the sand.
And is it September this year or next year?
September of this year, okay.
And that's in, in maintenance terms, the water line, correct? Good, okay. Um, any questions?
Yeah, a question related to the inspection. What are the possibilities of them buying something else other than this painting? What else could actually happen?
So because we're doing the inspection every five years, uh, we're pretty up to date with what, uh, needs to be done. Um, we had our inspection, I think, just under five years ago. Um, so we're doing all the recommendations that were in that report, uh, the inside of the tower is, uh, has been very good. So we're just be painting a ball of water line inside there because our, our protection has. Painted has, uh, technical inside, uh, uh, in very big condition. We did adhesion testing on the exterior of the power before we went out with the painting project. So that we're able to determine that we don't need to do a full sand last and recoach, uh, we can just do an overcoat with some touch up. So they were out, um, I think it was in, um. It was in spring May, I don't remember, they gave them this data, you can tell.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question. What is the use provided for these towers, some of them?
So there's some towers that are over a hundred years old, uh, that are in state, uh, this was built, uh, I believe in the early sixties. Uh, so we're, you know, looking at eight years, so we'll definitely get another fifteen years of the paint life of this, of this power. And at that time, um, we had said, we had been talking in the water commission that, um, the sand bike is, is a. Great option to have, of course, for storage of, of our water. Uh, but it also in summertime, it's a two day timeframe of water sitting in before it comes back out. And so it kind of degraded our water quality, so as we come into the local fixtures in our homes and our water used to decline down. The amount of time that our water sits in there goes up, and so. Or, uh, around here, uh, back in the sixties when they were living long range and what this tower can do was probably the right option, but right now I'd say. It's not from a water quality perspective. And so that's one of the things when this tower is, I'm thinking that we're going to start to take a look at it, what happens to our water quality here, and discussions with them when it's out. Because the water commission is very interested in that. So the next time that this power comes up for painting and work, maybe we. Replace it or we don't. Uh, have water power and we just run off of the pressure that we have in Milwaukee. Which is what some of the other communities do within the area. So.
And if we get there, what will we do with that? And.
I see a question, I mean, right now the utility does get uh enough revenue from cell phone companies, but they could put a cell phone tower there potentially. I I don't like this option, but I'm looking at the standard. There there is uh uh some communities that have done that in the past, uh there's others that will remove the tower and then sell it to somebody as well, but we have our uh meter pit in Milwaukee, there's a lot of people that are trying to sell that property, which is a big amount of illegal space. Okay, that's the elements.
So does that? Um, water tunnel, uh maybe this kind of, does that provide water to all the residences in?
Uh, correct, yes, yeah. So it's used for uh kind of doing our peak shaving, so during like in summertime, it's been really hot, we look at watering. Uh, so we don't pull a lot of water from Milwaukee all at once, we can kind of slowly be out of our standby and find pressure in our system. And it provides emergency water going for protection as well.
It was, well, if we get rid of the tower and don't have the pressure, which is usually what the water says. If they have a problem downstream of us, we're screwed.
Well, so that's what we're gonna take a look at, again, this is something that, you know, ten years down the road that we're gonna look at. But we do have two separate fees for Milwaukee, so if one fee does, we're down, we have the option. Uh, then pour water and the second, so those are all options that we're gonna take a look at before we actually make a recommendation as to whether or not we want to proceed with removing the stand pipe or the ones more with another painting project.
Other questions? We need a motion to approve the engineering contract.
How to move that we need approve the contract with Dixon Engineering for inspection service, this both sand pipe painting project in the amount fifty million dollars, fifty dollars.
Is there a second? So it's been moved by trustee passes, it's second by trustee Woods to approve contract with Dixon Engineering. What's the action service, all those in favor? Five, any opposed? Eyes have a motion here, thank you. The next item is consider approval of contract with said thirty one, federal, federal for the stand pipe painting project. In the amount of three hundred and four thousand seven hundred and ninety nine. My thing.
That is, that is, uh, so again, as we've been talking about, we're taking our stand for water tower. Uh, Dixon Engineering sent out uh specifications to the painting contractors that they work with in the past. Uh, we had seven of them that replied back to us, uh which is a lot more than I thought, I would give about three or four. Um, so it was an excellent crowd, um and P one is the correct pronunciation, P one Michigan came in as the uh role. Uh, there is for embracing the theme of the tower and then doing the overflow of the exterior and instead of dry, like wet interior of the water line. It'll be doing some spot repairs, we're doing some apartment of uh some last things on the roof and then also uh we have to bring our vent and overflow of the codes for T N R water leaks as well. And then we're gonna sell a painting mixer uh to help improve our water quality as part of this project. So that's all included into the three hundred and four thousand seven hundred and ninety nine dollar project. We originally had budgeted above eight hundred thousand dollars for the changing the tower. Because we were thinking that we had to do the entire interior and it could be possibly through the sand last. So with the adhesion testing that was done, we found that it's, you know, safe as what I'm wanting to do to overcoat. So that's what we wanted to, it was recommended to us by Dixon, uh and of course, honestly, we we like to protect it, it's a lot of us. Uh, because it is very expensive to uh do a full sand last and repaint. Also, it would take a lot longer as well.
Yeah. Questions?
You you know that the bid was accepted was for lower of 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 seventy?
Correct.
Okay, so the question is, do they have significant experience in these types of projects? I'm always weary with all the low areas.
Right, so uh Dixon Engineering in the fact that there is a recommendation about Dixon that they've worked with people uh on a number of other volumes, very good standpoint, they like work with P news, so they were very actually, they were very happy that they were a little bit as well.
Yeah, I see that. Uh, I have a question, because you get like.
This looking at this tower, this is a very detailed one, it's big word out, you can see it's top getting in, right? So what is, is this design when you kind of know what?
So this is what I'm talking about, like a sandwich, so on the picture, it's just like one big column that was up. On the towers that you're talking about, it's kind of like a flooded column, it's a small column and then hole and all the water come on top. That's the variety of product down into the distribution system. Here, we are throwing water on top of water, so it's one big column of water that's that's there. So uh we want that little column that water sits on top of, it just different out of each other, and that's why we have some water quality issue because two million gallons of it is inside that tower. And unfortunately, you know, like I said before, with the local fixtures, we are, our habitat is just under eight hundred gallons. So it takes, you know, roughly two, little two days of the water and you want that power loss until we say it. In summertime, you know, when the temperature rises, the temperature, the power rises, our chlorine demand uh goes up, and so our chlorine is hit one. So yeah, it's just a matter of the miscases, you know, there's different tiles that are out there in this case with the stand pipe, it's storing water, not the water.
Okay, I was wondering why this one was like, was there a certain reason? Was it cost or design?
Yeah, so I don't know why they showed that at sixty's, uh, I I get a lot of it. The terms uh the future, right? What I know, so what was the future they looked at to serve the area at time? It's probably the next season, right?
Other questions? Actually, the meeting.
Just going along with what um. He gets. I'm somewhere in the town in the sand, in regards to not hold it in. Um, does Dixon and uh federal have any connection or anything like that? Is it, they had worked together and mass, you know, projects and things like that, and I guess we have asked that as that. I didn't want to be a type of, you know, contract, and you were starting to be like. You know, that happens sometimes. Companies work together and I mean, they did this best. They did basically gave gave you the uh the recommendation to choose them, and it was such a range from you know, three hundred thousand dollars to ninety three. So yeah, that was one of the questions that I had to this. Uh, so Dixon is completely separate from the contractors doing the work, because they will also inspect them as well as they're gonna do with our project. Uh, so when they say they're in a good standpoint, they've had very good success with the projects that they've done before. Uh, and I asked Dixon about that, why didn't we see a bunch of large gap? Uh, so there's a couple of items, she she has said that uh they were very happy, like I said, with B was, uh, and they price came very close to what they thought the price would come in at. Uh, there was a couple of others that were close to them, there was one for three hundred and thirteen thousand, one for four seventy five. So they thought, you know, those were the ones that really read the specification that came out to the looking project and understood. The other ones that are well over a million dollars, they're just throwing a number at it, hoping that if they get it, well, that's the highest estimate for the year.
Other questions? If not, we do need a motion to approve this contract. With federal.
I move we approve the manager's recommendation to set the bill from P one. In here, the amount of three hundred and four thousand seven hundred and ninety nine dollars to complete the stand pipe painting project.
It's been moved by trustee Woods, the second by trustee Johnson to approve contract with federal with stand pipe painting project. And the amount of three hundred and four uh seven hundred and ninety nine dollars, all those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Eyes have a motion here in the amnesty. Uh, the next item is consider approval of contract with Mid City Corporation for installation of a pressure reduction valve in the amount of twenty three thousand nine hundred dollars and removal and the abandoned and two additional booster pumps. And the picture few station in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred dollars, is that page in the one on sixty and right?
That is correct.
Okay, you spent a lot of your money.
Yeah, yeah, we had a water commission meeting a couple of weeks ago and talking about, so this is all I think I'm related because we're gonna be taking the power out of service for a few months period. We're gonna be running on the pressure with some Milwaukee waterworks, which should actually be higher than what we normally run on on ten PSI higher. That'll cause a lot of water abrasion, so. Uh, ten years ago, when we took the power down for uh inspection on the inside, uh, we had a five water man raise in a three day period. So uh to avoid that, we want to put in a pressure reducing valve. So when we bring in water from Milwaukee and we go through this part of the reducing valve, we'll knock it down on ten PSI and then we'll ride on that pressure the entire time while the tank is on service. And so we're hoping that the the cost of this will offset numerous water man raise, that it will be experiencing that how it takes to what customers that we're experiencing when that tower is down for two year. The nice thing about this too is that this is gonna give us some traction into operating the system if we don't have it on it. So uh where the booster pump stations that were put in, uh both that take it in forty thirty or underground stations. Uh, in my fourteen plus year that I have been here, we had never run those booster pumps. They were put in back in the eighties because Milwaukee was threatening that lower in the product. And so we wouldn't have to boost our pressure in our system, that never happened. Milwaukee is not going to be lowering the product, I thought, with the superintendent. Uh, the distribution lines or their priority reason, I'm upset, they're not gonna change many times, even if they were talking about doing back in the eighties, so um, we're not more concerned about the pressure going down anymore. So we have a lot of these pumps, uh I would not feel comfortable recommending them, we run the pumps, I just think we should have banned them. And so sixty three one came up because we'd be able to put the pressure reducing valve there pretty easily and remove one of the pumps, and that's why we're here, we have a contract here of always bringing in all of it to remove the other two pumps as well. And they came in with a very low price, we would do work, I think it's uh very uh inexpensive to have that work done. And uh we're actually working with the pump manufacturer to see if we can actually sell those pumps, something to be used in because they have such, you know, long runtime that was done, I don't even know how long they've ever been. Yeah, so um. So that's part of this project, and then they will, this has to be done before we get the tower out of service, so.
And I was gonna say, it's good, so it's not quick, if we just die in September.
Correct, yeah, so we uh have the booster, we have the pressure reducing valve, uh we're supposed to come here in late uh August and so that's the first thing that Mid City will be on call for is to put this in together.
Questions? If no questions, we need uh. Does my power go? You asked already? No, you got a question? The one thing you don't want is is bound, but. So. Do we have a motion to approve this contract?
I move the move every time, maybe city corporation for installation or pressure reducing valve in our twenty three thousand nine hundred dollars. And removal and abandonment of two additional booster pumps and the sixty three station in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred dollars.
Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Owens, the second by trustee Booker to approve contract with Mid City Corporation. Um, all those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Eyes have a motion here, um. The one thing you said, Tom, is possibly trying to spell. Um, some of those pumps, do we know what the born rate is?
We just started to start to work that.
When you find out, you can mess them up. Yes, you can mess, match, you know, this, because I like to know if they hope it's thirty thousand now. Yeah.
I have to go five, six hundred dollars, you know, well. Well, the the pumps and the waters that are too expensive, it's all the length of work and work. It will have that as the major part of those second project.
All right. So he gave some information before we got to IDP, that said we're full of eight cents water.
So uh as part of our financial analysis that we had done a couple of years ago with the utility uh back in twenty nineteen, I believe we filed for a full rate base. Uh, and that was approved in twenty twenty, we implemented that for fourth quarter of twenty twenty. So uh that went through twenty twenty one, uh we stayed at that rate, we did a simplified rate case at that, which was for four and a half percent. And we instituted that during first quarter in the twenty twenty three year. This would uh be when it's we're starting uh a fourth quarter of this year, twenty twenty three. Um, in this simplified rate case with the health service commission, now they moved up to eight percent. They know that because of the cost of the place that's gone up, you know, uh that we've been seeing. The benchmark rate of return for water utilities is at six point one percent right now. Our rate of return last year was, I believe, in uh three point six four percent. So when we looked at our financial analysis back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we said, let's do, we did about a thirteen percent rate case at that time. And then we said, let's do these simplified rate cases every year, because it's a lot more manageable for our customers to handle for, we did not need to be eight percent. Uh, but more like a three to four percent every year rather than doing these thirteen to twenty percent re-increase every five or six. It just don't happen because of inflation and everything now, but it's the the standard or the uh simplified rate case is going on to eight percent. Uh, when you look at others surrounding communities and water rates, we're still gonna be, actually, we're, we will be the lowest in the greater Milwaukee area. The water rates with this eight percent increase. The others have increased, Milwaukee had increased the the past year, um fortunately for us, because we've negotiated how our rates get determined between the wholesale government, our rate went down, there's slightly, it didn't go up like a lot of other communities. So we didn't have to apply for a uh increase at that time, but this is just kind of doing that once a year, kind of keeping up with inflation increase. Uh, and so after that, I think uh around here is um integrated number four. Uh, the fourth was, however, the first two was are an omicron and a rose, you not have a hollow fire protection fill, so it's not really a new pair of apples.
Any question? In motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve eight percent water rate increase effective December first.
Is there a second? Certainly. With information. If the move by trustee Johnson is second by trustee Woods to approve uh eighty cent water rate increase effective December one, twenty twenty three, all those in favor? All right, any opposed? Motion here in the hands. So we'll keep on. And uh, thank you, John. Thanks, Tom. Uh, consider approval of revenue in twenty twenty fourteen and that's for the twenty twenty four, twenty two, twenty twenty eight, be that be.
Yeah, thanks President Mike O'Bray, so last meeting, we gave a presentation of the capital improvement plan. Uh, the only changes that occurred to the plan, uh one, talk about the utility changes already with Sherman. Thirty point one six, the other changes, um in between meetings, we met with uh the city and the county regarding Bradley and I feel better now that it sounds like we have a date tentatively on books for the city to do a reconstruction of Bradley for twenty twenty seven. Um, we had asked them to memorialize that later this year, um so they locked that in. Um, and for us to be able to have this reconstruction rather Um, and for us to be able to have this reconstruction rather than a building overlay and have this issue a few more years down the road. Is that at least they win, that should sooner, but as soon as they think they can get it in. So um, with that, we moved some things around with Bradley, that's in your update packet. Everything else is as when it's done. So if there's any questions coming to C I P, Derek and I are present for any questions. Otherwise, uh, just as a reminder, the resolution would require a go-hall.
Questions?
I don't want. And looking there. What if you talk or maybe look at, especially like another, the late time years, like the homes that upgrade to TP dust and the neon hardware. Would it possible, we can possibly lease in that kind of stuff or rent it? And that way you wouldn't have the big outlays on it.
Uh, I mean, I can, I can certainly talk with base side I T, as far as that option. Uh, I think the good news is everything at least for twenty-four. Um, I think we would be okay, but some of the other things long term, because we're only, we're next here looking at a computer replacement and network security assessment, which we're overdue for, I would say we'll do that and then the whole refresh, which is moving all of our hardware like to a computer, so at least for twenty-four, we wouldn't have to worry about that question, but some of the other things I may ask about. Those other options, so when we do the C I P discussion next year, I can have a better answer.
Yeah, okay, because you know, that kind of stuff, it goes, I mean, before five years or something like that, and you gotta buy new stuff that there's some kind of recent program or something like that. It's changing, wouldn't have to have them, you know, they have not, you know.
Sure, yeah, we have to inquire.
Other questions, uh, sorry, yes. Uh, my question is, maybe service for Tim Alper. Uh, we got a grant over two million dollars, have we actually priced that out, which is going across the year?
So they just completed the design, so they're in the process of getting that cost out. Um, and and so we'll have a bunch of items that will show the cost. And we'll see with what's proposed, if that's within our two point three something million. Um, and then so that we'll set up a public presentation to with both the board as well as invite the community to be able to go through those specifics. Um, so but right now they're, they're costing that out, so um, I would imagine hopefully the next one to two months, we'll have that information. So I would definitely anticipate by October, we would have that presentation for the board of the community.
But we'll get to decide on what we keep and what we don't keep.
Right, yeah, if the presentation comes back and it's in the ballpark, I think then we would set up the meeting and if we would be well over, that's where I would, before we show this great part design to the public and use the board, I want to make sure like, we're not doing something that's like two hundred percent of really what's a hundred percent. And then we show you the next presentation and have itself now, like that would be a morale player, I feel like for all of us, so. Uh, but the 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 initial design is is fairly completed to point out where there are identifying costs, so we're very close to that point. Okay, yeah.
Other questions? And then we can see this uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-eight, so we revisit it each.
Each year. Um, it just told the Lord of the reason why we do this early is in, you know, we go through the budget and we realize the thing, I mean, we can still, you know, to this. So just know if you get preliminary budget and it it's higher or lower than what you would want, we can always circle back to the capital improvement plan, the adjustments, but this, you know, this is really the fundamental changes a lot year to year. So doing a plan like this really helps to identify and outline how we're going to do our equipment and vehicle and other capital expenditures.
And since this is a role calling, we will, then we're going to be still with motion.
No, yeah.
Yes, but we do, do the motion there. And in fact, in a role calling. Um, is your motion?
I'll make a motion, I move to approve resolution twenty-three, that's fourteen, adopted in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty in C I P.
Is there a second? Let's see. It's been moved by trustee Thompson, the second by trustee Booker to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight C I P, we will go-hall. Um, trustee Booker, uh, trustee Woods, uh, trustee Owens, uh, trustee Thompson, I, trustee Johnson, uh, President Montgomery, uh, the resolution is adopted. Resolution is adopted, man, this thing.
Thanks, and I just want to give a public recognition to Derek, the inner finance director, uh, pulling this document together and Derek, how many versions? Yeah, so we would get a plan out of Derek, like five, six changes, you'd have to go back and then sometimes I change my mind depending on where we're at. So I just want to give him recognition because, I mean, there's a lot of different edits and working with a lot of department heads to get to this point, so thank you, Derek.
And he's a true accountant. Um, next item on our agenda is consider approval of contract award for twenty twenty-three road paving paving program.
Um, so this is our annual road paving program, this feature listed in the memo, um, we had three bidders, Painton, Wolf Paving and Star. Um, Painton was the little bidder, um, and they've done a ton of village work, they pretty much get it almost every other year or so. Uh, so very familiar working with Painton and um, they will likely get started towards the end of August or right after Labor Day. And when they usually come into the village, it's usually about a three week stay when they're in here and they have to be all the paving. So combination of mill overlay and pulverize and re-litter.
Questions? And do we notify, I don't know, about the benefits?
Yeah, so everyone in these neighborhoods, um, like the Meadowside subdivision has already been notified for some other work, but they'll all get a a letter just saying, hey, here's the schedule, what's coming in, that uh, contact information and that sort of thing. But usually there's really very minimal disruption, especially like the old overlay areas, the old machine will droop and get all the streets built off in like one or two days. And then the paving is usually right behind it, so pretty quick, pretty quick in this process.
Are you getting questions? Any of your roles listed? If, if not, we need a motion to approve this contract.
I move that we improve the contract to paint and doling for twenty twenty-three roadway and paving.
Is there? It's been moved by trustee Woods, the second by trustee Owens to approve the contract award for twenty twenty-three roadway, the paintable and the green and yellow. Um, all of the favor, any opposed? I stand motion here is in this place, the next item is uh, in the matter of special testing of pulver and roadway approach costs for twenty, well, revolution of twenty fifteen. Rider approach cost for twenty twenty-three ditch reconditioning, rehabilitation project.
So kind of in line with the road paving program, we also pick a street um, to do some reditching and driveway cover replacements. And so this is our, in our, the resolution that we're passing is uh, letting everyone know that the village is intended to assess. Um, and then at our next meeting, August, when we'll have the actual like public hearing and then adopt the um, assessments. So there'll be a spreadsheet that'll present with what the actual costs are for those residents, typically they're around like five, six hundred bucks, but most of the assessments are for people, so it's pretty standard. Um, and so this is just step one, and then there'll be a public information meeting and also I'll send out letters tomorrow to see this approved. And um, a public information meeting and then our boys will get started uh, after that second meeting in August. And we have a lot of week, we heard two of other workings for this year's project.
Now, is this work done by us?
This is, this is done through the village and funded through the East One Water Utility.
Okay. And when I look at uh, North Kilo Court, is that if you're going east on round here, that's the right job.
Correct, go up in, so Kill beer and then River Bay. There's like two holes on River Bay and then there's a bunch, I think there's ten holes we have to do on Kill beer. So a little bit smaller project issue, but um, definitely that's streets already.
Would that create any issue with access?
No, um, when we're working, the guys, I mean, Brighton were in front of the driveway, there's a hole, um, we'll work with the owner, they have to leave, you know, we're getting in and out. Uh, but each driveway cover is a couple hours and then they backfill it so temporarily. And then when Painton Dolan comes through to repave the street, that's where they'll do the driveway at that time.
Uh, questions?
Um, related to the cost, was this a one-time settlement or was it spread over a few years?
It's a one-time, so how this will work, um, once we're completing the project this year, bills will go on like November, December-ish. They will then have until October fifteenth of twenty twenty-four to pay that bill. Um, they can't pay it in, I think, in the one, the balance is due October fifteenth. They can't, so she's not to pay, then just automatically we'll sign to their cash bill. And it makes no difference, so somebody will prefer that.
I trust people.
Uh, that's your two things, one, doesn't have the right committee that talks about still has uh, you know, finance and public works.
Oh, apologize, yeah.
And and the second thing is, says the the net box, a hundred dollars.
Although that that should be a hundred and fifty, correct? It went, it went up two years ago, I think we adjusted. For last year.
And we approved it.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that was going to be a notice in there.
Thank you.
Other than, other than I was trying to figure out my digital qualify at uh, a pipe.
And I assume Jeff, this was trying to have frequently asked questions back mid that I had in there, that we're, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure I name those at the time.
Any other questions?
Okay, so, uh, what's, how will these days be like, what should do now?
Um, so the the pipes that now we put in, um, typically the last about seventy years for the pipe. Um, the probably the thing that will fail first is maybe the ditch will get silted in, and so sometimes the ditch will be coming out of the last year than the pipe. Um, these, the H E P pipes have a lot longer life than the old metal. I said, kind of, versus the second will be rusting, you get holes and re-saw. We switch to the H E P.
You know, other questions, we need a motion.
I move that we approve resolution under twenty thirteen and fifteen in the matter of special system of coves and roadway approach costs for the twenty twenty-three ditch reconditioning project.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved by trustee Thompson, the second by trustee Woods to approve resolution twenty thirteen and that special set of cove and the minor approach for twenty twenty-three ditch rehabilitation project, including role our vote, trustee Booker, uh, trustee Woods, uh, trustee Owens, uh, trustee Johnson, uh, trustee Thompson, I, President Montgomery, uh, the resolution is adopted. Uh, we have item number seven, I move a gentleman at seven.
I just wanted to ask one question for your turn. That last one that you just approved, was that, did that need to be approved subject to the changes? Yeah, had brought up.
It was, it was an appropriately asked question back then, so I would just, I will do that, it's, it's a rule that I sent on.
Thanks, Jeff.
So we move a gentleman that's got an O I P here. Thank you all.